Okay, folks, it is seven o'clock. It does, it actually really did, really did make me go, but I may hit it more often. That won't stop me, I'll just pick it up and hit it by now. Um, going to order the work session, Peter, if you're like that, my name is Lacey. Um, you know, it's on here, so we're gonna, yeah, follow the order. It's on here, so we're gonna do the moment reflection, pledge allegiance, why not?
Pledge allegiance. Like, when I'm doing our six, for our, uh, because they're going to open public, they have one hundred eighty under, uh, individual, whatever being justice or all.
Any additions or changes to the agenda? No, okay, which case then? No, actually, my fault, thank you, roll call. Lori, with us?
Yes.
Lori, would you call the roll, then we can get him on here, please?
Broad.
Here.
Colazo.
Here.
De Bowser.
Here.
Brick.
Here.
Lancaster. Noel.
Here.
Cerneso.
Here.
And Smith.
Here.
Seven present, one absent.
Well, thank you, Lori.
You're welcome.
Thank you. The additions or changes to the agenda.
Did you wanna put the shade tree stuff on here?
Yeah, didn't we?
They were, yeah, where it starts, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that was, for public works. Thank you, I don't remember what my email said, but that's where we're supposed to go, right?
Yes, of course.
Okay. Okay, any other additions or changes? No, okay, um, I didn't see we signed up for public comment. Any public comment? No public to come, or no, well, yes, public, but they didn't wanna comment, okay. On committee reports, uh, Peter, starting out with you, I know it feels a little funny, you're about to have your committee duty, but. We have a, have a motion.
And he took that in the motion.
We move to approve the updated HR policy regarding donated time off allowing employees to match donated personal and or vacation days with up to eight hours of sick time. Have we proved that?
No, we did not.
We did not, yes, that was, uh, we went here.
Was that supposed to be on the discussion for tonight?
It's, it's on the discussion for tonight, as far as on.
So why isn't here as motion?
Well, we were, after this, after we were gonna vote on it. The, the, the motion is.
First, right?
Yeah.
So, hold off on that, nothing else.
Well, it hasn't been segmented correct, that way I should said that?
So.
Well, well, I don't, we're, we don't need a table, right, we could just talk about it now, or are we just letting it die, talking about it admin?
No.
No, you, you had to.
Right, that's what you wanted it on.
Okay, so wouldn't we technically need a second, then discuss? Yep, okay, so do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we moved to seconded, now is our discussion on the motion.
Okay. Well, the, the motions, uh, when I, when I had read over it, it didn't, I didn't feel like it reflected what we had discussed at the meeting, which was allowing sick time to be donated in equal parts to vacation and personal time without a specific cap. And here it's listed with a cap in the original graph that we were sent as an eight hour path for sick time.
So, hang on, 'cause I, I read that and it's kinda.
Yeah, so we've got a new, this is the new graph that you're looking at, that she just sent.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that, okay, so this isn't the one you're referring to?
No, I, we just got a new one.
Right, right.
Added the or on that second line.
Yes, okay.
So they could give eight hours with no match of sick time. Or they could match sick time and personal time to give them more then.
Still up to forty, still up to.
Still, yeah, all the, uh, everything else applies.
Right, so it's supposed to be a one, the, the spirit of what we said last, was one to one, correct?
Yes, and it's kind of almost there.
Right.
The policy.
It's, yeah, it's still.
It's just where it says a one time match.
You guys, somebody said that.
A match of, of, of eight hours or more, right, there should be like an or more in there.
Yeah.
It's, it's all.
Cause the example is correct, like if you donate sixteen hours of vacation days, you can donate sixteen hours of sick days.
Right.
The example is correct, it's just the wording.
It's the wording to, to describe what it got to that example, right?
Okay, so it should read, that line should just read that, the borough will provide a one time match of eight hours.
Why is it have to say one time there?
So they only do it once per year?
They only do it once per year, they'll say once per year, one annual.
Yeah, we could say, or, okay, um, the borough will provide a annual match.
It actually says it in the lines before, doesn't it?
Yeah, the sick time may be donated once per year between January first and December thirty first, in the amount of eight hours, or the borough will provide a annual match, we can change it to.
Well, something in this is wrong, something, you only do it once for eight hours, and you can't have sixteen hours of sick days donated in the example below.
The examples for the, the match, yeah.
Maybe it says like.
Okay, 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 sorry. So the, the sick time, this is if you donate nothing, I'll let you do eight hours of sick time. Okay, then, yes, I remember that, yes. And, or, you can basically donate, for every eight hours of sick time, you can donate, you'd have to donate
Vacation.
Past the original eight hours, you'd have to then donate eight hours of, of vacation or personal time, in order to get to another eight hours.
What if we say?
Second number would be.
For.
One is a free, you don't get the freebie.
Or an equivalent match of six time.
It's one or the other.
Had it, but now it's gone.
But yeah, why, so stop me if this isn't what we had said, they, they were given eight hours of sick time, we'd let them do eight hours of sick time, in order to get to more sick time, they'd then do personal time. Should be sick time, personal time, then would allow them to do another eight hours, so they could do sixteen hours of sick time for only eight hours of personal time.
Yeah.
If they wanted to then stop at that moment.
No, I think that's what the or is stated. One or the other, or the other.
And what is that cap? Makes sense to me, though.
Yeah, don't get them.
There's that many people here who don't understand it, we should probably revert it, because that seems like, why would you give away, why could, why can't you give away sixteen hours of sick time if you get six, eight hours free? Like a, a free.
Because somebody, I think the point is, nobody wanted to give, they only wanted to give sick time, so that was the point.
And they can still have that. If you donate one, another whole day of vacation, then would we even allow a match?
To the first eight hours.
And then the next day, then another match.
Right, eight hours of personal time unlocks another eight hours of sick time. Is, now, we don't have to then say, yes, this is a vote, but that's what we landed on, left.
Yeah.
Right?
So technically, in this example, you should be able to donate eight hours of vacation time, and you get sixteen hours of sick time available.
Correct.
First eight hours, it's free.
But then you'd be done, you couldn't give any more sick time without giving more vacation. And then it still has the other things, no more than half.
Yeah.
Et cetera, no more than four hours, all the other rules we still like.
Right.
Okay.
I have.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I wrote, um, so they have the eight hours, or, or employees may donate additional hours of sick, that sick time so long as it corresponds to an equal donation of vacation or personal time, and then the example.
But that's not technically correct either, is it?
That almost sounds, they can somehow do that for you now.
Okay, so, as long as it, okay, well, I'm not.
So they can donate eight, and then any additional.
Down the eight.
I don't know, it's just solicited, that's not accurate.
Okay, yeah, okay.
It did sound similar. Yeah, I feel like there's a better way.
So.
I think, I feel like there's a more streamlined way to word this, where there's less fusion on every.
Okay, so in the, so we should take out the or.
And keep the or.
Cause I'm reading, in my HR brain, I'm reading that, uh, you either, you want to, or the other.
You're saying, any employee can give eight hours of sick time, without doing anything else.
Right.
Eight hours.
Cause they, that's what they wanted, they didn't want.
When does that need to be done by, is that?
Yeah, yeah, one thing at a time, one thing at a time.
Give it eight hours per year.
One year.
One, eight hours per year.
Yeah.
Now, if they want to give more, so they have a boatload of sick time, and they, they're comfortable to give away some, we said, okay, look, match it, give part vacation, and then you earn that equal amount, one for one of sick, right?
Yes.
Right. Absent edge, in units of eight hours. So you can't give away an hour, if you're gonna do it, you gotta do it in blocks of eight, if we're on one workday. So, and it's capped at forty, so.
And no more than half, et cetera.
So, yeah, so I, I think, when we say or, I would take out the or, and say, each employee may donate eight hours of sick leave per year.
Cause.
Then, if you want, if you wish to give more, then it goes to the next, but I'm not sure how we get.
So to be second?
Yeah.
One second.
It was.
So, just to be specific, though, it shouldn't be required to give more sick time. For example, maybe you're a newer employee, and you're trying to build your own sick time up, you can, you don't have to give more, they give eight hours, they give eight hours of personal time. And then you don't, then, right, it shouldn't be like you're required to then give another eight hours of sick time.
But why would you do that, then? Why would you do that? Can you, can you say what he's, I don't know, he's restating what he's, cause I think it covers all.
Okay, if it does, then it's. Do you mind one more time?
Employees may donate additional hours of sick time, so long as it corresponds to an equal donation of vocation, vacation or personal time.
And I would say, in units of eight hours.
In units of eight hours.
So I guess my point, my point was, it doesn't encourage for only giving personal. If they wanted to give.
So his question, what Luke's question is, if I wanna give eight hours of vacation, and I'm gonna give the eight hours of sick, then I'm gonna give eight hours of vacation, but I don't wanna give another eight hours of my sick, can I do that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what it says, in the, the very first part.
Yes.
So, are we stating that this can be given to a certain employee evening charge?
No, it's to the bank.
So it's going to the bank again?
Yes, you can't, you have to, yes, for the policy for ten, twenty years down the road, so.
Okay.
Does employees have to apply for a specific cause for that day?
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Under the FMLA.
Yeah.
Do we have, worry the, ready to vote in?
I don't have Jonathan's wording for, and it's, it's not numbered, but it's.
Jonathan, can you? Still, you're wording, I was like, I'm gonna try, but I'm, I can't hear it.
Okay, so. Uh, well, sure, you're right, yeah, the version.
Yeah. The example was.
Okay, are we, I don't feel now, it seems, with this, versus, yeah, right, and a redo.
I'm okay with the amendment, as long as one got it written, and she's got it.
No, just, well, cause last time we had, we didn't wanna.
Yeah, because it was too confusing.
No, I'm, I'm with you, it satisfies. What it is you're.
I don't wanna, yeah, I just don't wanna be so sorry that we're.
Yeah, right, we don't wanna be the people twenty years from now.
Cause I was like, who wrote this? It was awesome.
Yeah.
No. What was that?
Just wanna make that clear.
You do, you have, I feel like.
Is there anything else?
And all the max, all the, you know, maximums still.
Right.
Still apply, and fifty percent of the balance, so assuming they, they can, I don't have that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you have a version? Can you go then? Yeah.
He sounds way over.
Okay, so wait, you'll read. In that, I'm just gonna read that section. Um, the minimum number of vacation or personal hours that an eligible employee may donate is eight hours and a maximum of forty hours for no more than fifty percent of the employee's current balance. Sick time may be donated once per year between January first and December thirty first, in the amount of eight hours. Employees may donate additional hours of sick time in increments of eight hours so long as it corresponds to an equal donation of vacation or personal time. Example, if an employee donates to vacation days sixteen hours, the borough will allow a match of two sick days, sixteen hours, from the employee's sick time. Employees cannot borrow against future paid time off to donate, employees are currently on an approved leave of absence, cannot donate paid time off.
Um, the part of, should we also include that the first eight hours, so it appears as though if you give, you can give the eight hours, then if you wanna give more, it's equal, um, there isn't an extra eight hours there, given. You lost that in the. Does that make sense? No, it's, that's. The rewriting, the rewriting is additional.
Right. That eight hours, you can give eight hours, and then let's say you wanna give two more days, so now that eight hours turns into, um, sixteen hours and twenty-four hours.
That second sentence, we got, we got to have lost that clarify.
All right, if that's, there are you guys, we got rid of that.
The only other thing is, um, it's not numbered, but that first dot, it just said vacation or personal time on the very top of donation of.
The donation and.
And they strictly voluntary, so you might wanna add sick, since we are allowing it. The first dot, on the first page.
That would be the part of the forty hour, eight hours of sick.
Yeah, up until that, that, where it says, the donation should say, the donation of vacation personal or sick time is strictly voluntary.
That's, it's just not listed in there. All right.
So, on the one. But on the first dot on the next page, it also only refers specifically to the vacation of personal time.
Correct. And that, should, that should.
But we're, we're still doing a maximum of forty hours even with sick time, aren't we?
We're fifty percent correct.
Yeah, but we're, what we're saying, yeah, and it's like a maximum of forty.
Well, it states maximum forty in reference to vacation and personal housing.
So you want it to match, so where it says the donation of vacation, personal or sick time, should, it should match and say the minimum number of vacational for vacation, personal or sick time. For sick hours that an eligible employee may donate to, I don't have.
I find that it's separated, because then you would have to change all that contingent, see, in the back end of that sentence, like eight hours or maximum forty hours.
Yeah, in the long run, if you're given forty hours, you can give up to twenty hours of vacation and twenty hours of sick time.
I, I understand that that's.
Cause it's gotta be in increments of eight, and that isn't.
Right.
Right?
Also.
You could give thirty. Yeah, you can give thirty-six hours.
Also, the way I, I would read this, ten years from now, when no one in the room is explaining to me, is I can give forty hours of personal time, and then the corresponding amount of sick time.
That, yeah.
Nothing in here, nothing in here includes, I, I realize the spirit of it is supposed to be there, but if when I read this, and do not read, that sick time adds to the, is included in the total of forty.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's included, it's not forty hours of whatever, forty.
I don't exactly know how to record this, I don't know how to do that, but it needs to be in there somewhere.
It can, or not, it's. Play show. Can one give twenty-four hours, as it appears as though you can only give sixteen and then thirty-two. So technically, you've given your eight sick, and then your eight personal, you should be able to give another eight sick, and not sub eight sixteen twenty-four, and not have to reach there too. Is that clear? Doesn't feel clear to me, but it does.
The, the deal is, you don't have to, you could give vacation time without giving sick time.
I understand that, but I don't know if you understand, but you read it without, that's what I'm saying, I don't think.
With the example, going in increments of eight.
Well, and the beauty of this is, if we realize we've worked something terribly, two weeks from now, we could always amend it. Um, what? I'm concerned, we can redo this, this is not a blood oath, right, written in the book, right?
And the one we've already changed, we could put, like, an equal donation of vacation or personal time, not to exceed the total donation of forty hours of time to the bank.
Yeah.
I mean.
Why would you be around?
Combination, can use word combination there, yeah.
And total donation of one person.
Total donation by one person.
Cause otherwise, it would be, nobody can give more than forty hours to a cumulative group.
Thought to exceed the total donation of forty hours of time to the bank by any given employee.
There you go, much better.
I mean, we all giggle, but we've read the union contract.
Yeah.
I think just.
That was written in Haas's state accounts twenty-five years ago, whatever it was, okay?
Be relevant, but is that making it left? Is anybody in parking?
Yes, that word.
It doesn't, they're, they're still under.
And then, who, who is the eligible recipient, that applies to this?
We took the HR.
They have, or, they have to, they also, for family, it's a family medical.
Personal time.
So they have to go under the family, the, family medical.
So who is the HR, are you drawn now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm just, making sure these are new changes, these are new things.
Okay. Hasn't been even asked, or anything else, makes me feel.
I have a problem with, I feel like this. I'm going to.
You mean, you don't wanna just say, here all the other friends and?
No, because our verbal adjustments. Doesn't transfer to pay.
Off the bank or?
Nope, that's.
What?
Down there, man.
The iron badge, you know, this change is very.
Boy, shit, no.
There's not even papers. That'd be wrong, okay. I brought these time out, this whole bronchitis, I really don't think so.
Tell me you're kidding.
Okay, here's the.
I'm not really worried, Casey.
Thirty-one.
You're kidding, right, it's not actually a thing?
Yeah.
Wait, listen, that's all wrong.
Wrong.
Everybody's inside, ladies.
So much.
So.
That made it happen.
So while they're figuring that out, I, I do wanna comment, I think, back and forth from last, what I was hearing last month, what the union, or what the employees were saying, you know, they wanna give sick time, and I think, but the borough is being very generous here, because I wanna put this in numbers, when I'm telling you this, to, as an example, so if you have twenty, say, you know, twenty people donating twenty hours, you know, that's, that's gonna be like about four thousand dollars per out, the year, per year, so.
So you're talking about twenty per person?
So, so twenty, so in the average of, say, twenty hours, uh, twenty dollars an hour, cause we have people that make twenty-five, people that make eighteen, seventeen, so.
So the, the only thing I would add to that, though, I know, I know what you're talking about, but we also have to understand the rare circumstances of which this bank could be used, especially in four.
And, and I understand, I, I agree, but I wanna make it clear that, so in five years, if you guys come back and see something on the financials and be like, wait, there's, you know, under thousand gone from extra sick day leave, I'll say, well, we all agree to this, I just.
We're having a really terrible year, if we're burning a hundred thousand dollars in extended sick leave bank time as one calendar year, in thirty day increments.
Right.
Okay, we're having a really horrible year.
Yeah.
Okay, just saying, you know, but, up your life insurance, if that's, I mean, worse group.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't think we're at risk of going bankrupt over a.
Not for the budget.
I appreciate.
Situation where this is out of control.
If you revisit it, we can, we can, get it off the table.
But I do think, I do think, though, although the employee pointed. They also.
You know, it's just not that, you have a police department of twenty-one, I know there's people, you know, they have a younger group of, you know, people having kids and wanna be off, and a lot of FMLA, so this policy has to, you know, reflect around the boards, you know, again, cause we can't afford.
Our, would, do you mind reading off what we, the changes to that section?
Yeah, I will read that section.
From this, this, the first one, it's not numbered.
Yeah, got it, all right, so donation of paid time off, the donation of vacation, personal or sick sign is strictly voluntary. Donated paid time off will go into a lead bank for use by eligible recipients. Recipient or donor identity may be disclosed if recipient or donor allows. The donation of paid time off is on an hourly basis without regard to the dollar value of the donated or used leave. The minimum number of vacation or personal hours that an eligible employee may donate is eight hours and a maximum of forty hours or no more than fifty percent of the employee's current balance. Sick time may be, may be donated once per year between January first and December thirty first, in the amount of eight hours. Employees may donate additional sick leave in eight hour increments, provided each donation is matched by an equal amount of vacation or personal time. Total contributions to the bank may not exceed forty hours per employee. Example, if an employee donates to, to vacation days sixteen hours, the borough will allow a match of two sick days, sixteen hours from the employee's sick time. Employee cannot borrow against future paid time off to donate, employees who are currently on an approved leave of absence cannot donate paid time off.
We need to add the, no more than fifty percent of employees' current balance, uh, after the forty hours of.
We'll get to it.
It's, no, when you read, the second part.
But it's not.
You read it again, when, when you read, yeah, what, what, after the sick time, there was just forty, and it didn't include that part.
Yeah.
Where that other eight hours, yeah.
Uh?
What's that? Where that other eight hours go, he said, if you donate two. So sixteen. That's just talking about additional hours.
Yeah.
Not talking about key, whether it's total, just additional.
So you get the eight hours and an additional six times.
There's no or.
Requires match.
Okay, it matches that first block.
Yeah.
Yeah. That was.
Okay.
I'd like to make an amendment to the original motion to include the new language.
So, okay.
Okay.
We have moved and seconded, then amended, moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion of the motion, as it's currently amended?
Yeah, we have to vote on the amendment, and then vote on the whole thing, we're, we're new.
I don't agree there.
And it needs to be roll call.
So we need to vote on the.
We're spending money.
I would do.
All right.
Well, we could do a roll call, do we need to do a roll call on the amendment, though?
I don't know, so. Let's just do a roll call in a second.
Do a voice vote on the amendment.
Okay, all in favor of the amendment as read a moment ago? Say it from my second, all right, any opposed? Well, amendment, motion carries.
Now, you need to vote to approve the amended motion.
Okay.
Order to amended, now you're voting to approve the amended motion.
So technically, that vote, put the amendment on the initial motion, correct?
Right.
So, okay, so we're, any further discussion of the motion as it currently stands? There we go, we got all the work done. All right, sure, we can do a roll call, Lori, whenever you're ready.
Broad.
Yes.
Colazo. De Bowser.
Yes.
Frick.
Yeah.
Lancaster. Noel.
Yes.
Cerneso.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Seven yes, one absent.
Motion carries. That's it. Okay.
Okay.
Anything else to, from the administration? Okay. All right, uh, we'll save committee moment for the next meeting, Public Safety, Donna's not here, so I'll. What, right, there's an action. Um, okay, the venue application, audience, audience of one music celebration. Questions moved to approve the application for the audience of one music celebration sponsored by The Waymakers and Irons Park on Friday, September fifth, five thirty to eight thirty. Uh, it doesn't say we don't need a second, but it came from committee, so we don't need a second.
It was approved in the committee.
That's what I mean, we don't need a second.
That's correct.
And still, sometimes it'll stay one way or the other, it did happen to mention it, but, but I made the motions, in case you ended with.
Oh, okay. Uh, all, all in favor of approving this motion? All opposed? Motion carries?
Correct.
Right.
Okay, public works, you had, I mean, we're about to have that, even if you haven't, okay, we'll save commission reports, you gonna save the commission report, which you save, okay? Um, but, we are not gonna have a commission report per se, we'll talk about it in another meeting here shortly. Personnel, report. Personnel reports, Nicole, anything to add for this?
No.
No? LT and Luach Chief, anything to add for this?
Uh, just wanted to acknowledge the, uh, the job that the officers did, uh, over the weekend.
Lot going on this, this Saturday.
Very, very impressed and proud as usual, uh, no, no incidents, but they, uh.
Great work.
They were, uh, yeah, wet and old and. But they did good, good job, just wanted to publicly acknowledge that.
Oh, that's good, that's good. Uh, alright, Mr. Solicitor, anything for this? Okay, uh, we don't have an I P representative at the moment, so we're gonna skip that. Um, I will hold anything for another time, Mr. Mayor, anything you wanna add?
Saturday was also Flag Day and there was a ceremony at the Elks. When I went and did a proclamation and they did a real nice presentation of the history of the flags. How nice, uh, they do that every year, and so I know there was a lot going on on Saturday, but that happened to be another occasion. And very well, thanks, very nice, that's it.
Mr. Mayor, would it be possible to do a proclamation, uh, for the high school baseball team? Like, making the end of high school baseball, I mean, we don't win state championships regularly. I would sure.
I think it's a great idea.
I just think it might be something you wanna consider, I know the commissioners are probably gonna do something too.
Okay, we'll, uh.
For next, next meeting, or whatever you wanna do.
Sounds good, we'll put something together, yep.
Okay, uh, in which case, anything else for the mayor? Any old business? Okay, on to the new business, sidewalk program discussion, fifteen minutes.
Wow, it's a pass, it was supposed to be seven fifteen when we went into that discussion, so we're beyond that time.
Here to get it right, not get it that quick, okay?
Um, I think the best overview would be if you guys, the documents that we sent out, we sent out with the attachments. Where it said an overview and this kind of the. The letters are kind of for in-house, what we're working on in-house to send to the, um, the homeowners and. The property owners and the commercial businesses. But I think this sheet that Eden did up explains everything that we're working on, we have two sidewalk assistance programs currently going on, one. As you know, is the A R P and the next one is the grant, um, from the multi-transportational fund that we received. So what we're gonna try to do is when we've been working in-house, and I know Luke, we had a conversation, um. You know, we came up with some through the code office, they did, they went and did the first ward and the fourth ward. They walked all the sidewalks, marked everything down that, that failed inspections or failed or needed repaired, so we have that. If we have that information, so what we did with that information is we thought we'd pick an area. Because again, this grant has to be bid out, it's not like we can, we can run it like we did the American Rescue Fund. Where the homeowners would pay the contractor and they just reimburse them. We have to bid that, we have to bid it out, we have to pay the contractor. So what we thought is we do it in sections and that, that's okay with the grant, we can fix sections, we can bid out that section. And then have the contractors work on that, in the meantime, we'll send letters out to everybody in that area. Either if they qualify for one hundred percent of reimbursement or if they qualify for fifty percent. Um, reimbursement, and we went with those numbers to make it easier for the grant. In the long run, we're getting close to five hundred thousand dollars of sidewalks repaired. With the matching funds, that's gonna go into, um, a sidewalk, uh, fund that will be used for futures. And to continue the A R P funding. So.
You know, so.
Not the A R P, a program like.
Continue this program or of the A R P style where we, where we allow them to pay?
The A R P style, I.
Okay, so Nicole Seavis has to get her sidewalks redone, she owes a thousand dollars for the project. That thousand dollars goes into a seed account for an A for two, for, which is called A R P for.
Yes, yeah, cause we're not gonna keep bidding down the road. No, 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 that, then we'll revert back to the, what we think A R P is doing. Yes, yes, where they bring in their paper receipts and.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, some of the things that we talked about, we went based off what the information we had. Hi Eden, I think the, the square footage and the amounts that would reach above two thousand, anything. I think we went with two thousand for residence, a thousand for commercial, um, owners. So are, yeah, I think we're, as staff, we're comfortable with that number.
I guess to give you more frame of reference, the biggest, um, areas that it looked like in our inventory that we would cover. Would cost between thirty-five hundred and five thousand dollars, so that's kinda where that cap came from, that's not a majority of the properties, so you have. Couple handfuls of properties, yes, but the, the total cost would look like.
And I can't even remember, I don't think, and it wasn't a residential, it was obviously a, um, commercial.
Um, there was, I asked you about it, there was a typo.
Yeah, what was that?
It's under how to apply eligibility, specifically under resident, says you must own and reside. We, I had asked you about student rentals. So where, where, which one would they fall under, we need to make sure we word it appropriately.
It's not the student, it's not the person, you're, whoever's renting the home is not the one paying for this, whoever owns the home, it's the property owner. That's right, so it's the owner, does, if only have owner or.
It says own and reside, so it's right. So I just thought, I just thought of this though, so we would want them to qualify for more money than a commercial?
They wouldn't be listed as a commercial, they wouldn't be a, a property owner's not listed as commercial.
I understand that, but it's, it's a student rental.
It's a business.
So forgive me, so there's, it was, it was a key word tricky phrase problem, right? If you, if you own there and live there, then own and reside is fine. Right, the question comes with, what if you have an Airbnb?
That's a business.
Okay, so we just need to make sure that, that the commercial is boarded appropriately to make sure it includes. Student rentals or transient housing or whatever the classification is on.
Cause student rentals aren't business, they're not zoned, like business, there's no rentals.
Right, and so I just wanna make sure that we are not leaving them out as we still want them to fix their sidewalks.
Right.
So whichever category they go in, and however you wanna make sure the word, I just wanna make sure they're excluded, if you have to own and reside. And it's considered a residential, then they're excluded from eligibility.
Why can't we just say property owner?
Well, yeah, but it's, then yes, but then it's, do they go under business or residential?
Jonathan, for this case, they should go under residential, commercial.
For the larger subsidy?
Well, your part, I'm talking homes, what home dwellings, single home dwellings, if you're talking apartments. And maybe apartment, how many units, more than, I, four or five units, you could, or more than two units, you can consider that a commercial.
So a student rental down on Church Street is gonna qualify as a residential, not as a business.
Right.
Whereas, um. Branson Court's probably gonna be a business.
Right.
You know, um, somewhere on Philadelphia Supreme.
So I guess my question would be why, why differentiate, why not just one, one or business?
Doesn't matter how they file their taxes.
What'd you say?
I would, I like the comparison between a single home dwelling.
The, the idea of this is to help the resident, the resident, if you own a business, you, you, part of your business is keeping the upkeeps of your. Your outside building and, um.
That's an ethos to be with like our student housing.
I, I'm just trying to make sure that we're treating business owners the same and we're treating residents the same. Because, for example, there's a lot of student rentals that, that is their business, every student rental is just another storefront. And so I'm fine with how we land, I just wanna make sure we're doing it intentionally.
Like I said, now they.
Why does the student rentals of the M U?
Right, I mean, I don't know how, I don't think of the wording.
I say you go by single dwellings and anything more than a.
How many units?
How many units?
Yeah, with, how many non-related people live there, is that how? I think you should call on whatever is only does their. Because we do have a large M U zone on the side of campus, which. Would fall into and they can have businesses there, so. It's a business.
So the differentiation would be, I forget the frontage, but. Whatever the.
Zoning for like, you know, non-related occupants, it's like a standard, right?
Right, if it's non-related, single home dwelling.
Regardless of who owns it.
Right.
Who lives in it, well, obviously the owner is one responsible for it, but we're classifying it based on who's allowed to stay there, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, I, I don't think who's staying there, it matters, not property, it's the owner who owns the.
What is the purpose of the property, is it a business or is it a dwelling, either or?
No, that's not a fair comparison, because if you own student rentals, the dwelling is your business.
Yeah, so it's.
What if you had a, a, a bed and breakfast, you lived in the attic and you rented out the downstairs, that's your business.
But how do you file on your taxes?
I think that's why we go, we convert back to the codes and how the code lists them, if there are more than one or two units and then.
Forgive me, but what you just said contradicted yourself, well, the code can have it listed as single family and it can still be owned by a landlord.
Yes, but it's, it's a prop, but if it's two units, then you can, one unit is of one home.
I get that, but you just said it should go by the owner.
Are we giving more money, are we giving more money for? So.
Owner occupied or anything else?
Okay, but basically, if you look at our student rentals in Indiana, the individual homes that are owned, see a lot of them empty right now. So these people are not ha, if we want our sidewalks fixed or not, they don't, aren't gonna have extra money to fix their sidewalks if that place is not rented. So if you have this single.
If it's a liability, it needs to get fixed.
You can't, you can't, you're not gonna get money out of them if they don't have it, if the, if the, their income is empty.
Right, then they apply and they.
But they're going to get a lesser amount, so my point is, we, that's fine, but everyone should.
Suffer that opportunity.
I'm just telling you that if we wanna get these sidewalks fixed, we might wanna think of what's going on with these individual homes. By one, one older couple who would rent it out easily every year, and now they can't rent it out, it's leaving it sitting empty. You might not ever get the sidewalks fixed if you're not giving them the same amount, so I like the, the two options as Nicole was saying.
Yeah, can, I think, we just make this decision in house, and, and, yeah, I, I can we just say. Thought we had it pretty well.
Wording is fine, no, it really is, after, if we're saying if you've got own and reside there, that's exactly how it's worded.
Yeah.
I just wanna, when I talked to you on the phone, you said it should have said in or own or reside. Which then would have indicated this was a typo, now we're circling back to, actually no, we like it. Let's leave it that way, so that if I own a rental or five, I don't live in any of the rentals, therefore I don't qualify under. The two thousand dollars, only get the thousand dollars.
Yep.
Right.
Which is how it's worded.
And if at some point we repair all the sidewalks, we wanna increase that, we can go back and get that.
Increase the, the amount?
Like if you wanna make changes later. Every sidewalk in town.
I think too, I mean, the areas that we're looking at have less of the student rentals than.
Yeah.
You know, so we might use all the funding or not, even that, and not have this problem, and then we have to decide when's it gonna go.
But it doesn't mean they're on a bunch of rentals, even if we're not student rentals.
Sure.
Which is, we've decided a moment ago that just a regular rental falls under the one thousand dollar. Subsidy, not the two thousand.
Right.
Okay, any other?
No, that's, there's nothing to approve, we're just moving forward with the, the grant, and that's the paperwork.
Work session's over.
I lost my agenda, is that, everybody good with it though? Okay, everyone's good with it, and you move to adjourned call.